At this time, I'd like to call the council meeting of August 1st, 2011 to order. Roll call.
Mayor Yanish?
Here.
Councilmember Reese?
Here.
Christensen?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Amon?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Docken?
Here.
Baggerly?
Here.
T'bleek?
Here.
Nine present, zero absence.
Could we all stand and say the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing done, we'll move into the consent items. Move to approve and accept? Move to approve. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent items as written. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. At this particular minute, before we get started, I would like to say a few words and welcome our new city administrator, Ms. Charlene Stevens. Tonight is her first night at the first council meeting, and she's said that she would like to say a few words on her miscellany tonight. With that, Charlene, would you just stand and be recognized, please?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a scheduled hearing tonight, but that has been canceled due to the state's resumption of services, and so we will not have that hearing. And so we'll move right into the open forum. Has anyone signed up to speak?
No, Mr. Mayor.
That being said, we'll move into the next item, the Finance Committee report for July 25th, 2011. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't there, but I've been asked to read the minutes, so I will do that. First item has to do with the leisure services budget request. Community Education and Recreation Director Brizendine explained to the committee that concrete work and fencing on the Wrightfield Plaza at Talton Stadium has been completed at a cost of approximately $9,100. The Stingers agreed to supply the block, and the city agreed to supply the concrete and fencing to complete the project. Funding is proposed to be taken from the 2008 Leisure Services Cap for Expenditure Budget. Originally, $20,000 was budgeted in 2008 for a warming house at the Garfield Rink, but the project was not done. In 2010, $12,000 of that budget was used to irrigate the yellow field at Swanson Field, and that left $8,000 unspent. Further, $3,000 originally budgeted for storage sheds in 2008 remains unused, for that would give us a total of $11,000 to be available. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution approving the concrete work and fencing on the Wrightfield Plaza at Talton Stadium and to utilize $9,100 from the 2008 Leisure Services Cap for Expenditure Budget for this project.
I'll second it.
The motion has been made and seconded to introduce a resolution approving the concrete work and the fencing on the Wrightfield Plaza at Talton Stadium and to utilize $9,100 from the 2008 Leisure Services Cap for Expenditure Budget for this project discussion. Councilman Docken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wondering, the warming house at the Garfield Rink, is that going to come up again in the future, or is that... We're not planning to do anything with the warming house at Garfield?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, as many of you might remember, the conversation related to that was with the unknowns of the Garfield site, related to the school usage of that facility and the safety of that warming house. We have chosen not to pursue that in the near future, pending what takes place at the Garfield site and what the needs will be if indeed something does take place with ownership of that facility.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Docken?
Aye.
Baggerly?
Aye.
T'bleek?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
The next item, staff informed us that a donation of $13,923 has been received from Michael Olson to erect a sign at the north entrance to the Aquatic Center on 15th Avenue Southwest. This sign would be similar to the existing one on 22nd Street Southwest. Mr. Olson is also considering a donation for a sign on the Aquatic Center building, which would consist of individual brushed steel letters spelling out Dorothy Olson, Aquatic Center, to be placed either above the main entrance or on the block wall to the west of the main entrance. It's estimated that this would be an additional $1,500. Following some discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution accepting donations of $13,923 for a sign at the north entrance to the Aquatic Center and approximately $1,500 for brush steel lettering on the Aquatic Center building and to send Mr. Olson a letter of appreciation.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution accepting donations of $13,923 for a sign at the north entrance of the Aquatic Center and approximately $1,500 for brush steel lettering on the Aquatic Center building and to send Mr. Olson a letter of appreciation. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Docken?
Aye.
Baggerly?
Aye.
T'bleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
The next two items, there have been some changes in the numbers. I will be reading the correct numbers. There was a change in the amount of $132.17. You have some executive summaries in front of you that have the corrected numbers, so just for your information. Dean Schoquist of Donahue and Associates presented the committee a proposed change order number one, decreasing the total of waste treatment project 1017B contract by $179,437.36. There were four items with unspent balances. Shelving and furniture allowance of $9,356.59, that's where the change came about. General allowance, $145,882.92. Unit price for 162,000 gallons of anaerobic digester contents, $15,197.85. And unit price for 100-ton refuse disposal, $9,000. It was requested that the council accept this change order, which decreases the total contract for project 1017B to $1,858,262.64. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to approve change order number one for project 1017B as presented and authorized the city administrator to execute on behalf of the city of Wilmer.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution to approve the change order number one, the corrected change order number one, for project 1017B as presented and to authorize the city administrator to execute it on behalf of the city of Wilmer. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Amon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Docken?
Aye.
Baggerly?
Aye.
T'bleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
The next item has also had to do with the waste treatment plant. Again, Mr. Schoquist informed the committee that waste treatment project 1017B achieved substantial completion as of June 13th, 2011. After inspection, Donahue and Associates prepared a list of items that needed to be corrected before final payment could be issued. Renewal Contracting has completed these items, which have been inspected and verified as satisfactory by city staff and Donahue and Associates. Subsequently, it's being recommended that the council approve final acceptance for project 1017B and authorize the city administrator to execute final payment to Renewal Contracting Incorporated for $57,052.70. That again reflects that $132 change. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to approve final acceptance of project 1017B and to authorize the city administrator to execute final payment to Renewal Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $57,052.70 on behalf of the city of Wilmer.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution to approve the final acceptance of project number 1017B and to authorize the city administrator to execute final payment to Renewal Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $57,052.70 on behalf of the city. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Amon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Docken?
Aye.
Baggerly?
Aye.
T'bleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
The final item were some reports. They received the local option sales tax, the June 30th cash and investment, second quarter interest and dividends, second quarter investment activity, June 30th Rack 8, June 30th CVB, second quarter rice trust, and June rice trust reports. That was for information. There was discussion around the local option sales tax program, including the Western Interceptor and development of the industrial park and the old airport. That was for information only. Any sort of questions, I would move to file the minutes.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance Committee for the report for the July 25th meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. This time, we'll move into the Community Development Committee report. Councilman Docken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Development met at 4:45 on July 28th. We had a number of folks that were there for that meeting. Item number one is public comments, and there were no public comments. Item two is parking needs analysis, and this was taken for information only. Steve Rankwest, EDC Director, gave a PowerPoint presentation to an EDC Operations Board recommendation to engage a consultant to conduct parking needs analysis, and there is an attachment to this. I don't know if we're going to show that or not. The proposed study is intended to deal with parking demands on a statistical basis and would not include physical site recommendations. It was stressed that the city should be looking out 20 years to stay ahead of anticipated development. The committee had a number of questions about historical changes in parking demands and future development. Representatives of the Wilmer Design Center explained their vision for the future and how parking was a part of it. This matter was received for information only. And I might mention, Mr. Mayor, that Mr. Ingham is here tonight. He has any further comments? I know we didn't extend an invitation to come to the council meeting tonight, if you want to.
Mr. Ingham, did you want to speak to the council? Did you have to state your name and address?
Richard Ingham. I'm representing the Wilmer Design Center, and as Jim mentioned, just following up on if he has any... Well, first of all, is there any questions? That's fine. But going back over to the question of parking downtown, ever since I've been in town, this has been one of the issues. And at first, I was here before the bypass, and there was a question of getting the congestion of Highway 12 off Glitchfield Avenue, and that was probably too successful. And after that was done, people were complaining that there was not enough traffic downtown. But I don't, as I was mentioning, the parking study is not for today's needs. It's really for a longer term. The vision of the Design Center is that there will be restoration or renovation of historic buildings downtown as well as new construction when the needs come up. What this is about is setting the vision for a long term of what's needed, that when opportunities come up, they can be exploited and taken advantage of and developed.
Thank you, Mr. Ingham.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was expecting that Bev Doughty was going to come, because she indicated that that meeting, as you'll remember, that there was a potential for 40 jobs to come to downtown Wilmer, and one of the... Or the reason for them not coming was because of lack of parking. Can you expand on that for the council and for the public?
I did. I think you got a handout I sent out today. But, you know, there have been things. The Design Center has had that vision. It's been success. We've had success. This last year, there's eight new businesses downtown. The year before that, there were about three. The deed program has provided and assisted loans and grants to assist renovation of eight commercial buildings, and it's about 20 residential properties. All the commercial properties are committed, and the residential ones, I don't believe they're all committed. But that's 20, and that's been a... Potentially, it's a very positive development. There is, as Jim was talking, somebody was looking for wanting to lease or buy the former Northern Grounds Building, and that was what Jim mentioned, the reason they wanted more parking close by. There is parking downtown for things, but as more buildings are used and businesses are more intense, it will be shortage. The key part is probably, there are different kinds of parking. If we have housing, right now, there's very little parking that's contracted, where somebody can actually have a contract space for like apartments. There's also customer parking, and we have some of that. And then there's employee parking. But it's really where it is and how it's arranged is one part of the study. There is issue, things happening to increase affordable housing downtown, and one of the issues that will come up is where is the parking? How do you solve the parking problem for that?
Thank you, Mr. Ingham. I would ask the council to take this for information.
Okay. Also, we thought that there were four other council members that were not at that committee meeting, that maybe they may have some questions or concerns that they would want to raise. And I agree with you, we should take it for information only.
Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Ingham? Councilman Amon?
Well, thanks, Rich, for coming here. I wasn't able to be at that meeting, I was on vacation, so... With the parking needs for the apartment building, the anticipated parking, and we've talked about it, I sit on the Design Center as representative from City Council. You mentioned anticipated apartment units. How many are there exactly that we're looking at? Is it 20 or 25?
You know, I think, you know, one of the goals was 60 to 80 or something, but whether that's realistic, maybe there's 10. There are parking now, but there's a lot of... Traditionally, the upper level of downtown buildings have provided the affordable housing, and there's no reason that these can't come back again. And it doesn't necessarily, I don't see it as one item, but there would be one thing that's initiative, might have either 10. But there could be others that would reduce them. So cumulatively, I don't know what the number is.
I'm not sure if the Design Center's put together a list of all those potentials.
No, I don't think there is a detailed list, no.
Okay, I think that'd be a good point to start out and then sit down and talk about it. You know, if there is city participation, or there needs to be city participation on maintaining the tax base on those buildings and keeping them occupied, then that's an issue we should address. But until that time comes, I think the City Council, from what I've heard, may delay us on, it's going to be a tough sell to deal with the study right now. It's unfortunate that those people were not able to find their parking needs downtown, but there are other alternatives, but they're all expensive. So, you know, there is some participation that's going to be needed by the city, and you know, I think we'll cooperate with any economic development tool we can get stirred up downtown, but I'd much rather see the hotel motel over on Block 51 across from Super America, but I think that's the dream right now. Thanks, Rich.
Councilman Christensen, did you have a question?
Yes. I'm interested in this 30-job company that says downtown lost. Aren't they presently in Wilmer, though?
I really don't know. I have no information on the... You know, that was through a realtor and a property owner.
Okay. I was told that it was a company that's presently in Wilmer, and they were just thinking of moving downtown.
I... So, you know, that might be, and many of the businesses that in one part will come to another part, and maybe if we're successful, some of the businesses that would move downtown are already here. But I think what we're trying to do is make downtown a destination, a place that restores and redevelops some of its vitality that existed previously.
Are you trying to bring back maybe the '70s and '80s feel of downtown Wilmer?
I don't think, it'll be different. You know, the world has passed, there's changes that have happened, not because of anything that's happened here, it's just the world is different. And we have to have a vision for the future. What is, you know, what are the opportunities? They will be different. It will not be a commercial center like it was before, but there are other possibilities that help the future.
You know, in the '60s and '70s, a lot of people did live downtown above all the businesses, and I don't recall having a parking problem for them. Many people lived down here, lived and worked down here, as a matter of fact. Are there any all-day parking spaces now in downtown Wilmer?
I think they're private ones. There are some, but I don't think they're enough. I really don't know how some of the people live in the apartments now, what they do with their cars. During the days, we see them on the street, but I believe they're removed at night, because when the night comes early, they're not on the street, it seems like. So I don't know what is happening with them.
Maybe a lot of them work at night, too. That could be.
Yes, that could be.
Thanks for coming, Richard.
Thank you, Richard.
Councilman Docken, did you want to finish?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number three is the community cleanup, and it's a continuation. Planning and discussion continued for the September 10th, 2011, community cleanup. An informational packet from Lakeland Broadcasting was presented, and that's attached to these minutes. Discussion included details for the disposal of household hazardous waste. Funding is not available for the county to provide or staff a special collection as they currently collect five to six days per week. Dave Uppsall from the MUC explained their participation in fluorescent light bulb disposal. He said the utilities would not be involved in the appliance collection because the recycler had agreed to accept most appliances for free. Sergeant Nappi from the Wilmer National Guard will direct two or three teams of guard members who will pick up products that cannot, that others cannot haul. A collection fee will be charged as well as a disposal fee. Rudy Veehill of Rack 8 described cable TV segments, shots to advertise the upcoming cleanup. Rick Dolly of Cullen's Home Center explained their plans to also collect appliances and electronics and to offer an opportunity to donate usable products to military families. Chair Docken inquired about the liability on the part of the city. City Attorney Ranning responded that the proposed cleanup effort didn't create much liability exposure for the city, and this matter was to be continued and discussed conclusion to the cleanup effort. Are there questions for there?
Councilman Docken, would you expand a little bit on the information that you gave me today?
Oh, yes. I did get a call from Jenna Hildenbrand of Q102 and another business in town, Uncommon, which is north of Wilmer. We are also going to, at 1:30 on that day, have a group from the Legion, VFW, and DAV, and some Boy Scouts that will dispose of an American flag properly. Uncommon sells flags, and so if you have flags, they would be willing to take a flag, but in return, if you would like to buy one, depending upon the size, there would be some form of reduction for that flag. So that's a very nice gesture on the part of the Uncommon folks.
Thank you very much.
Item number four, updates. Staff provided updates on the following. Work on the airport land release will resume now that the state is back in operation. Guidance on the marketing plan and national registration application are expected to be provided by the state. The second item would be the trail and pedestrian plan hearing will probably occur later in August due to a delay in preparing the final draft for the planning commission. Item three, construction projects. United Farm Credit Services and Rice Care Suites are nearing completion. Work on the new dental clinic continues. The planning commission approved a plan review for Little Caesar's Pizza Drive-Up Facility. The fourth item. Significant improvement is being made in the mobile home parks. A major effort to remove trash has occurred in the West Park, and it was underway in the East Park. New management seems to be willing to hold tenants to a higher standard. And finally, the John Supper Club, no work schedule or progress reports were submitted as required by the council. Staff will follow up with a letter to Mr. Kudrowski. And unless there are further pieces of information to come before this, Mr. Mayor, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Community Development Committee for July 28th, 2011. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. That being said, we have consideration of the off-sale intoxicating liquor license. Kevin, would you like to explain that to us?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, you have before you an application for an off-sale liquor store in the remodeling area of the Soro Gas Station on County Road 5. Owners are the Sunray Express. Police Department has reviewed everything and found things to be in order, and it is staff's recommendation that we approve that license on a roll call vote.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the off-sale intoxicating liquor license on the Sunray Express. Discussion.
This been looked at by our police department, and they approve of the plan.
Detective Chad Nelson has reviewed all the documents, and Chief of Police has signed off.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Docken?
Aye.
Baggerly?
Aye.
T'bleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amon?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. We'll move on to the consideration of an ordinance rezone certain lands from general business to limited business of affiliated community centers. Bruce, would you like to attack that one?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, a petition was filed by affiliated community medical centers to rezone the property they recently purchased, which is the former Washington School property directly west of the main clinic building. That site is currently zoned government-institutional because of its school use, and their proposal is to rezone it to a limited business use that would allow the building to be used for storage and maintenance. It's a recommendation of staff that the ordinance be introduced before a public hearing at your next meeting on August 15th.
Mr. Mayor? Introduce the ordinance.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to introduce the ordinance for a public hearing on August 15th for the affiliated medical center. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. We'll move right into the announcement of the council committee meetings. Councilman Anderson?
Finance Committee will meet Monday, the 8th, at 4:45.
Councilman Amon?
Labor Relations Service coming to Wednesday, 4:45.
I'm assuming these are all at the... I'm assuming these are all at the City Hall?
Yes.
Okay, and then Councilman Reese?
Next Public Works Public Safety Meeting will be August ninth, next Tuesday, at four forty-five. I will not be there, so Councilmember Christensen will have to be the chair, and Jim, if you would sit in for me, I would appreciate it.
Councilman Dock, on the Community Development meeting?
The eleventh, at four forty-five.
Under, this way, Councilman Dock, you have something you want to share with us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received my copy of the American Legion, Department of Minnesota paper for the month today, and in the center section, there is a picture of Captain Jim Felt, who was recognized at the Legion State Convention in Menomon, and it's a great, very nice-looking picture of Captain Felt. I'll pass that around if you want to look at it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Chief Lifles, did you have something that you'd like to add?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I was going to add that the Wilmer Police Department will not have their cops meeting, their normal first Tuesday of the month cops meeting at the fire department tomorrow night. Instead, we will have National Night Out. We have moved the cops meeting to the following Tuesday, which would be the ninth. So just to announce that that meeting date has been changed, and that is due to the National Night Out event that's being held around the community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, Charlene, would you like to say a few words?
Sure, I just want to say that I'm very excited, and I'm pleased to be here. I think it's going to be a long tenure with the city, and I look forward to raising my family in this community, and I really feel privileged to have an opportunity to join this organization and work with such dedicated and high-caliber staff in serving the citizens of Wilmer. So thank you again.
Thank you for being here. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned. Make a note of that.